Who we missing? Okay, I prefer to start with the full council, but can we text them?
Whenever a break, can we?
Hey Mindy, can you hear me?
We're just waiting for Steve.
The mouse started the meeting.
I am ready when you are.
What about the one minute? Let us begin then. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Ashby is present. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And I expect Councilmember Hanson momentarily.
Very good. If anyone would please rise, I'd like to ask Councilmember Carr, please delete us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Again. Pledge allegiance. Larry?
I was muted. I'll do it again.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
Well. I think we just did the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I want to turn it over to the city clerk for just a moment to announce, under this remote and virtual way we are doing business, how we intend to take public testimony, so long as we continue in this, in this format. Mindy?
Thank you. You will see on your screen, members of the public are encouraged to view meetings online and to provide public comment electronically. If you choose to provide public comments during the meeting, please call 916-808-7213 and choose the option for the agenda item you'd like to speak on. The consent calendar is considered one item. If speaking on more than one item, you will need to hang up after speaking on the first item and call back to enter the queue for subsequent items. Please turn down the audio on the device that you're watching the meeting on when it is your turn to speak, which will reduce the audio feedback. And there's a reminder, you have two minutes to address the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if I may add, just because we're not in person with the callers, and so there are no visual cues, what we will say when you get to two minutes is that your two minutes are up, ask you to conclude your comment. If for some reason the caller doesn't, then we will move on to the next caller. And so we just ask everybody to do their best to respect the timeframe and the time limit and to work with us. We do want to hear you. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Members, are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item 18 for staff direction. That item is contract with Glen Hall Pool resurfacing project. And to let the public know that both the Glen Hall and the Tahoe Park pools contracts were awarded. But council does not need to approve this because the contract amount falls under the city manager's signing authority. So again, that item is pulled, but it is proceeding.
Very good. I know Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to comment on item 10, if that's okay. Is now an okay time for that?
Sure, maybe we should see if we get a motion. Are you seeking to take it off or just comment?
I'm okay with either. Do you want to pass the balance and then come back to it?
However you want to handle it, whatever your preference is.
Well, maybe I'll just make my comment and then we could decide as a group from there. Item, item 10 is on for pass for publication today, which means that we would then hear it, I suppose, next week. But it is a controversial item, and it takes power from the Planning Commission and also from the council. And I don't think that we should hear it now. I think we should wait until we have an opportunity for more feedback from the community. This is our first meeting even allowing community input by phone, and we're not sure how that's going to go. I don't think this is a good or transparent process. I also don't support the item itself, but I don't think now is the right time for us to make this big of a shift in the streamlining of the entitlement process that would take away council's ability to modify conditional use permits, et cetera. So that's item 10. I'd like to vote yes on the balance of the council, I mean, on the balance of the consent, Mayor, and I'm happy to even move consent absent item 10.
Okay, again, it's a pass for publication, not approving the item type, but I, there is a motion to pass the consent calendar absent items 10 and 18. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, I need to figure out how to call on folks in order, if it's possible, members in order, possibly you can either text me or text the city clerk and obviously get to everybody. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to react to Ms. Ashby's statements. So this has been in the hopper for months. There have been many public meetings regarding the ad hoc ordinance in which the public was invited to come vocalize their opinions. It's been through law and ledge twice. And there was a fair amount of time ensuing. I agree with her that there may be some controversy around it, but I disagree that people have not had ample time to voice their opinions. I think it's perfectly appropriate to pass it for publication and move it forward for council deliberations next week. As I said, there's been tremendous outreach by staff on this item.
Well, a motion to pass it for publication would be appropriate after the motion on the remainder of the consent calendar. Let's continue to hear from members. Councilmember Chenier?
Well, I'm happy, Mayor, if we want to do the rest of the consent. I do want to address item 10. So however you want to do it.
Is, is there public, why don't we do this? Is there, is there any public testimony on any item on the consent calendar, including 10 and 18?
There is no public comment for consent calendar.
Okay, so let's take a motion then on the consent calendar absent item 10 and 18, and 18 will not be heard today for the reasons the clerk expressed, but on, on the motion, please call the roll.
So the motion is to approve the consent calendar absent item 18 is pulled and 10 is pulled for further discussion.
Correct.
For separate vote.
For separate vote. Correct. Go ahead. Madam Clerk, you can, if you want to call the roll, or can I do a yea and nay?
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Hanson joined us about 5:13.
Okay, so the majority of the consent calendar has been passed. Let's now go back to item 10. There isn't a motion, but there is comment from council members and councilmembers.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
We moved and seconded a pass for publication, which again, not approval or disapproval of the underlying policy in the ordinance itself. Member comments. Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things that I think are important on this one. This is some policy changes that have been brought forth by members of the Planning Commission that ad hoc group and then passed overwhelmingly by the Planning Commission. These folks went to Portland twice to look at the process that's used up there. They came back. They have spent months and months looking at this. We had this on the agenda a few weeks ago, and a number of council members didn't wish to see it. They thought it should go back to law and ledge. So we did take it back to law and legislation. We had a very, I think, prolonged discussion about it. Alex Ogilvy from, who is chair of the Planning Commission, came and testified and kind of gave us a history, which I would, I would ask her to do when we take this up. It is somewhat controversial, but I think overall the conclusions that law and ledge folks came to were, one, it would actually enhance in a lot of ways, public engagement in the process and enhance public engagement at an earlier time, which would save money, time, effort, both by city staffs and by developers. And that there were, there were ample changes in the rules that would allow for additional public comment, for example, a kind of real estate type sign going up on a property as soon as that property was put into the process for development, so that people would see these are happening, a lot of things like that. So I definitely want to move this forward. Glad my colleagues have already moved and seconded it, but I'm very much in favor of this coming back for discussion as soon as possible.
Councilmember Hanson has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I joined a little bit late. Toddler chase going on here at the House, but I heard part of Councilmember Ashby's comments. And I just like to reiterate a couple of things. One is the Planning Commission did, I believe, vote either unanimously or all but one in support of this, all but one, I think, was the ultimate vote. I see you shaking your head, Ms. Ashby.
It was all but one, yeah.
Yep. They did initiate this process because most of the projects that would be included here in the ordinance. And again, this is meant to be a procedural item. The substantive debate is meant to be at the next council meeting, but I think it's important because people have raised concerns. The vast majority, or the majority of all the projects that would fall under this, were non-controversial, no comments, very little debate. And what it does, especially during our housing shortage, allows projects to have more certainty and to move forward in a way that gets them done with less time, less staff work, and gives the project applicant, I think, a little bit more surety that they won't get caught up in a lot of rigmarole, even though their project's not controversial. I did hear the comment about CUPs that Ms. Ashby raised. And I just think it's important to know that I raised a similar question last week of the staff, and I think they're prepared to address it next week at council. But I think in the end, we should save this debate for an actual council meeting rather than try to deprive the council of a discussion about it because it has bounced back and forth to law and ledge. And the Planning Commission has reviewed it over a long period of time. And this is really a product of their work, and I think we need to honor them by, by allowing this proposal to go forward, which is why I made the motion.
Okay, there, Councilman Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, this is a procedural motion, and so I want to, I'm going to be supporting the procedural motion to move forward. I also want to remind my colleagues on the council that this was a citizen-led effort from our volunteers on the Planning Commission. And yes, there, this, there is concern that was brought to the Planning Commission. But the fact is, is that also part of what came through not only once at this council and law and ledge and this council, and then this council sent it back to law and ledge twice, heard multiple times through the Planning Commission. Now it's coming back again so that we can have ample discussion. So I think it's prudent to move forward, but also the direction at law and ledge was to look at the, the, the community engagement process and to come back in, in six months if this is approved by the council so that we can sure, make sure that there are appropriate feedback loops so that the public has ample input. But if this does move forward, there are more inputs for the public to participate in than the current process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been briefed thoroughly on this by the staff. I'm not on law and ledge. I took extra time to take a look at it. And I'm okay with moving this forward for fuller discussion next week. But I do have a concern about the notification process. And I've seen the signage that we are proposing to put up. And I don't think it's really sufficient. I think if there is a project that's going to come into one of our districts, that one of the boxes that should be checked is at discretion of the council member, we have a community meeting. I think we can do that in a rapid fashion. I don't think encompass every single project that came into our districts. But if the council member thinks there's a need for the community be involved in looking at a project as opposed to those people who happen to pass by and look at a sign or within 500 feet of the mailing list, then I think a community meeting is in order to give who are right in that project a chance to take a look at it and have it explained to them. And I think we can do that in a reasonable way without slowing it down at all. So I will support the motion to move forward, but I think it's necessary that we have one additional box that the developer has to check at the discretion of the council member, have one community meeting within a reasonable period of time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor Harris, and then back to Councilmember Ashby.
So, thank you, Mayor. You know, all of the discussion brought up by my comrades on the law and ledge commission and by Councilmember Carr are all valid. Of course, that's the debate to have next week. Whether or not councils should maintain a little more discretion over these projects is, is really substantively what we will be discussing when we take this project on. I just wanted to say to the public that all of these issues that have been raised by council members tonight are embedded in the staff report, and if you read it thoroughly, you will have a clear picture of what is offered, what you think may be lacking, and then bring those concerns to council next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, so Mayor, I didn't mean to initiate a debate on the merits of the policy itself. However, it's good, and it sounds like the will of the body will be to have that discussion next week, which is fine. Like Councilmember Harris, I strongly urge people and anyone watching this that isn't a council member as well to read the staff report, because I read the staff report too and came to a different conclusion that it's not good for the council. Really, I will be voting no tonight on the procedural item to move it forward because I don't think it's appropriate to make this sweeping of a change in this format on a Zoom council meeting with very little input. It may have gone to law and ledge a few times. There may have been public meetings a few times. But I tell you in general, I do not think people know that this is happening. And normally, at a council meeting, we would be inviting folks in. There'd be a lot of attention paid to it. Right now, we're distracted by something far more important, the pandemic that we're all dealing with. So my no vote and my rationale for it not moving forward, isn't that I don't like the ordinance, though in full transparency, I do not. It's that I think that many people will not, and that I don't think that they have an opportunity to participate in this process in an appropriate way for something this important and sweeping. And I don't think we should take this sweeping of a change to our entitlement process in the middle of a COVID pandemic where we're on Zoom council meetings. So I won't support it, but I appreciate my colleagues hearing me out.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, and it's clear we're going to have a full discussion next week at the city council on the, on the merits of the ordinance itself. Please call the roll on the pass for publication item.
Councilmember Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
He's muted, but I think he's a yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay. To be continued next week. Members, let us go to the three public hearings beginning with item 24. I wonder, though, Mr. City Manager, whether these items, at least 24 and 25, could be taken together or not?
They can be taken together with separate votes.
Of course, yes. But one presentation, please, on items 24 and 25.
Okay. Peter?
And I do have speakers on item 24.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm Peter Lemos, Code and Housing Enforcement Chief for your Community Development Department. That is before you are the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing in Dangerous Buildings case fees and penalties for special assessment and/or personal obligation. Item 24, the Community Development Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fee Staff Reports listed amended total of 102 properties with a sum of of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligation with the property. Two properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line items 43 and 123. Five, the Housing in Dangerous Buildings Case Fee Staff Report listed amended total of 68 properties with a total of $91,921.94 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the property. Two properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have set up payment plans and/or paid in full and are identified as items number 24 and 28 through 32. Staff recommends the city council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessments, levies, and/or personal obligations upon the properties. That concludes the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Are there council questions?
I move the item.
Can we open and close the public hearing?
Open and close the public hearing and move the item.
On item 24, and I do have two speakers.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Okay, let's hear. Let's debut our phone line public access here.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
And your name, please. Start with your name.
You know, I wanted to comment on item 20. There were some written comments on that item as well. But since I'm probably out of order commenting now, there were some comments on item 20 that weren't shown before the vote. And thank you. I'll clear the line now. Bye-bye.
Okay, I think, Madam Clerk, we want to ask the speakers to identify themselves, or you can identify them so that we know who is speaking. Next caller, please.
Welcome to the meeting. Please provide your name first and last, and you have two minutes to address the council.
Go ahead. Can you go ahead?
Caller, please go ahead.
Yes, I was calling to get the fees waived under my father's name.
Sir, can you identify yourself, please?
Caller, can you please identify yourself?
Barbara Chester.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi, Barbara. I believe we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you please speak up?
Barbara Chester.
Thank you for calling. Please, please begin your comments.
Thank you for calling, Barbara. Please begin your comment. You have two minutes to address the council.
I was calling to get the fees waived off of me that y'all trying to bill me for. My father is dead and it's in his name. And, and I'm not liable for his bill that you guys keep adding charges on, and he didn't have that bill before his death.
So Barbara, if we ask, we're going to ask the city manager to ask one of his managers to reach out to you directly to discuss, to discuss this. You know, again, when we're in person here, we can delay the item and, and a conversation then can take place in the back of the room, and sometimes it can get resolved. I don't know how we do this.
Mr. Mayor?
If we put this over, can we facilitate?
Please hold for just a moment.
Mr. City Manager, if we put this over for a half an hour, because I think the housing item will take that long, can we, can we facilitate a conversation with the constituent here and see if we can resolve the problem that she's raising?
We can't. Do we, Madam City Clerk, we have the person's telephone number. I'll have Mr. Lemos give the caller a call and see if we can work through it before the end of the meeting.
So without objection, then, let's put off the vote on item 24. The motion and second has been made. That seems like the fair thing to do. There's no other. Yeah?
I was just going to suggest we have the property removed from the item for now while the staff work through the issue and try to resolve it, and we just pass the balance, assuming there are no other public comments.
And as Mr. Lemos read into the record, the resolution will be amended. So if the direction is to remove that property, he could proceed with removing the property and addressing it with the caller offline.
Well, why don't we do this? Then let's make it real easy. Let's pass the rest of the, let's pass the item absent this property, and then let's give it a few days and try to work it out over the course of a couple of days and come back at another meeting to either impose the assessment or not.
And may I ask Janine, our public comment queue, if there's another caller and if she could get the contact information for the caller in question?
Barbara? Thank you for your patience. We appreciate you holding for us. We will give you a call back before the end of the meeting, okay?
Okay, so.
Do you have, what number do you have to call back?
Madam Clerk, let's see if we can take this conversation offline here. And so the council can vote.
Correct.
Okay, Barbara, give me just one moment. We'll go and verify that number.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers in the queue?
Yes, we have one additional caller in the queue.
Okay.
Do you want to put that one through?
Please go ahead.
How many?
You're on.
Barbara, hold on one moment. Welcome to the meeting. Can you please provide your first and last name? And you have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Hao Weng. I come to here today, but I don't understand too much English. And they told me to go out to the bidding and call them, and they can let them know what you say, what they, what they say. You hear me?
So, sir, you're saying you have a property that you disagree with the assessment?
Yes, one moment, please.
Yeah, thank you.
Sir, what is, what is, do you have a property where you disagree with the assessment being imposed?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take this property offline also?
If you can identify the property, yes, let's take it offline as well. Thank you.
Right. And if we could do that offline, that way they're not projecting their-
Sir, the mayor would like to know if you have any property.
Uh, yeah. What you say?
That has assessments.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. What can I do? Will you help me understand?
So the motion on the table is to adopt the resolution as amended, removing both properties for both callers-
Do you have property that has assessments?
And then Janine will take both of them offline-
You have a what?
-and get contact information.
I don't understand.
Excuse me, Mr. Nguyen. We have to use a translator with Mr. Nguyen. He's item number 32 on the, on your-
Okay, so you, Mr. Lemos, you, you know the property, then. Why don't we take Mr. Nguyen off the line and remove his property from the list to approve tonight? So now we have two properties that we're gonna look into. We'll either resolve it tonight or resolve them next week. We'll check back in with the city manager before the meeting ends and see what the status is. There's no rush. In the meantime, the motion is amended, without objection, to pass item 24 minus the two properties in question. Please call the roll on the item.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr? And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, not a, not a bad start. Right on. Okay, item 25.
I believe staff has already made the presentation.
Staff has already presented. Okay, is there any, is there any public testimony on item 25?
There are not.
There is not?
I will open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll on item 25.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hanson and a second by Councilmember Warren.
No, no, that wasn't Warren.
Who is the second?
Harris.
Mr. Harris.
It was Harris.
Thank you, I share.
I want to take credit for it work anybody else did.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Indeed.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Smoother than the last one.
Getting better.
Item 26.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of city council. My name is Chad Kotman. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My name is Chad Kotman. I am a senior engineer in the Public Works Department. On April 7th, 2020, a reservation fee was established as part of the new wireless ordinance under City Code Section 12.14.110. The cost per site for this reservation fee was set at the nominal value of $100, which is a significant reduction from the prior fee of $750 per site for the system that was operated by the city's consultant at the time. This amount is based on the assumed number of reservations for small cells that the city anticipates over the next two years and will be used to cover the city's reasonable operational costs of our new reservation software. This software has been under development for the past few months and will finally be rolled out for the use of the carriers this week. The reservation system will be managed by the city and will make the reservation process much easier for the carriers to navigate. So we asked that, for your approval, to set the nominal value for this new fee.
I'll make a motion to open and close the public hearing. Approve the item. Assuming we don't have public comment.
Second.
Is there, do we have public comment?
I have no public comment on this item.
Okay. Any questions from members? If not, please call the roll on the item.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
You're muted.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr? And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, that passes. Thank you all very much on that. Let's now go to, I would call it the main event of the, of the meeting, and that is the discussion item 27 about the proposed rehousing strategies for the COVID-19 programs that we are standing up with the county to bring more people indoors. I'm gonna turn it over to Christine Weicher at Tyrone Williams to give the main presentation, but I want to make a couple of open comments, if I might, just to sort of set the stage here. So prior to COVID-19, of course, we were already on a path to shelter hundreds of unsheltered sacramentants. And in fact, nothing in this strategy or even about this period of time has dissuaded us or stopped us from moving forward. Now, I know that I had a brief hesitation on the Grove project, and we've discussed that. That is now moving forward, of course. In addition, we are rapidly moving forward on both the WX project as well as the Meadowview Women's Shelter. Capitol Park, of course, is still open. We are implementing our share of the scattered site approach per the so-called five-point plan of several months ago. And so there is a lot that we are in the process of standing up separate from COVID-19. Then COVID-19 comes along, and of course, there is a great fear that the people who were unsheltered and often unhealthy are gonna be rapid spreaders of the virus. And so the state takes some of the discussion and the recommendations made by the statewide task force that I was part of several months ago to say we must increase the pace at which we bring people indoors. And so we all know now about Project Room Key, our collaboration with the county, which has been terrific, by the way. We are working with the county in, in more collaborative ways than we ever have on this issue specifically. They are actually in the lead on the motel project, but we are supporting them. We're on the lead on the trailer project. As you know, we approved funding to stand up the potential of 990 rooms. We're now at over 300, a couple of weeks in and progressing. And all of it begs a very, very important question. As we get people in temporary shelter, whether it be through what we are doing on our own that preexisted COVID-19, and combine that now with the potential to bring in 1,000 or more people temporarily during the COVID crisis, how are we going to assure that we don't turn people back out to the streets, but instead find them permanent housing? And so I've been working with the county, with the, with the housing authority, and with our Economic Development Department and our city manager to, to begin organizing this discussion. And of course, I've reached out to the county as well, because our partnership needs to continue beyond just COVID. And so tonight is the beginning of a very important discussion about what we're gonna do to not lose a moment, to make sure that we are housing permanently as many people as possible. We have a lot of options. Some are expensive, more expensive than others, but we also have the opportunity to bring in more money. And I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this and want to thank the Housing Authority. I want to thank Danielle Foster from our Economic Development Department. I know who'll be, I believe, part of the presentation as well tonight. I turn it over to you.
Evening.
Michelle, Michelle Donzier, please.
Hello, it's Christine. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you sitting with Michelle? Okay.
Can you see me and hear me now? Yes, you can.
Yes.
Good evening. Christine Weicher with SHRA, and tonight I am going to be presenting the proposed rehousing plan for COVID-19 homeless individuals. As the mayor said, the goal is to rehouse the program's participants to permanent housing. When developing the rehousing plan, SHRA and city staff considered the following criteria. What options can be implemented quickly? What participants will be, will they be currently rehoused? And will new housing units be added to the city's existing housing stock? After reviewing various options with these criteria in mind, the following recommendations are for your consideration. First, a motel acquisition program. Under this program, SHRA, an affordable housing developer, would acquire existing motels. Motels to be occupied in their current conditions with minimal improvements. After a few years of operations, the properties would then be completely rehabilitated using affordable housing funding sources such as mortgage revenue bonds and low-income housing tax credits. Second, our manufactured homes. A range of options were reviewed, and units with bathrooms and kitchens were the focus. Manufactured homes can be brought online quickly as they can be placed on finished lots and hooked up to utilities. Using existing city and SHRA properties, staff estimates a capacity for 62-bedroom units. Third is the expansion of the county's flexible housing program. While this option does not increase the number of units, it's worth considering as it can be implemented quickly. The program offers case management, connecting people to supportive services, and housing assistance such as housing locators, deposits, and rents. The program could also include a subset of board and care placements for individuals who need additional assistance. The County Department of Human Assistance has indicated they can serve 200 additional individuals within 60 to 90 days with this program. I want to share a chart now of the cost of the various options I just described. As you can see, the average cost for acquiring 124-room motel with kitchenettes is approximately $15 million plus 1.4 million in operating costs annually. In year two, you would only pay the operating expenses. Additional costs are lower for motels without kitchens. Purchasing 62-room manufactured homes to house 120 individuals across, costs approximately $7.8 million, which assumes an acquisition price of $62,000 to $71,000 per home, plus site includes improvements, along with 1.5 million operating budget. Again, in year two and beyond, you would only have the operating expenses. The flexible housing program could cost up to $5.3 million annually for 200 individuals if board and care was included in the program. Again, rehousing could begin more quickly than the other two options. As you can see, the flexible housing program per person operating cost appears higher than the other two options. This is primarily due to two reasons. First, the flexible housing program includes expenses such as rent subsidies. And second, while the motel operating budget includes the cost for property management and services, there may be additional supportive services needed. It also should be noted that only the motel option likely be eligible for long-term funding sources such as tax credits. Housing choice vouchers, to the extent possible, during the short-term operating and long-term financing, may also be considered in one or more of these options. We have also included a three-year program funding comparison table in your staff report. Potential funding sources to consider would include federal coronavirus relief funds, the homeless housing assistance prevention funds, and additionally, SHRA administered various city funds to assist with the construction of affordable multifamily housing. And SHRA has used the funds for motel acquisitions in the past. However, it should be noted that there are currently several affordable housing projects requesting these funds. In closing, staff, staff, the staff report should just be a beginning spot or beginning place for a larger rehousing conversation that should ultimately include the Sacramento County and the entire Sacramento COVID-19 homeless response team. I want to thank Danielle Foster and Emily Halcon for their assistance with this report, and we are seeking direction on this proposed rehousing plan.
All right. Thank you for laying, the, the report is actually very thorough, and though you didn't go into great detail on the source side, there is an important discussion in the report about the, the actual resources potentially available to us to, to implement a program like this, recognizing that there are other affordable housing projects, as you said, already in the queue, that, you know, that anything new would have to compete. So do we have public testimony on this item?
We have no public comment callers on this item.
Okay. Why don't we open it up for council discussion here? Who wants to kick it off? I know I've got questions, but I'd rather turn it over to my members here. Vice Mayor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, absent in this discussion is the idea of micropads. And I know I've discussed this with Danielle Foster, and she has followed up to a certain extent. The, the beauty of that approach is that we don't have the upfront acquisition costs, although we would have to support with land and utilities, but the actual cost of the buildings could be worked out through a lease program with a potential buyback in, say, 10 years. So I'm wondering, Danielle, can you offer anything to us as far as proceeding with micropads? Because I think they could be affected quickly and without a tremendous cash capital outlay. Danielle, are you still online?
Yes, Councilmember Vice Mayor. We can look into that option further. We have had some preliminary discussions on that and could include that as part of our next steps. Nothing further to report at this point, but it's worth looking into.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. You know, I put a fair amount of time into this two and a half years ago, and it looked quite promising, but at that time, we did not have monetary resources to affect it. But I still believe that it could be a way to get a number of people into housing quickly without a huge cash outlay. So I'm happy to work with you, Danielle, in meeting with the developer and see if that is still a viable path. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Who is next? I think it's Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank SHRA and our, and our staff for this work. We had a great meeting with some of the manufactured housing providers in the region. And first off, I think the, the opportunity for providing something that's under the Title 24 construction process by the state, I think is important because it speeds up, one, inspection is already done at the point of construction. So the inspection that only needs to happen is when we do the interconnect. We also have a lot of land that we own from SHRA that is already in R1 or R2 of housing locations where old homes were demolished, and we can replace them quickly with quality housing that has a long-term lifespan. And the construction timeframe for those is, the, for the actual construction of the home is about 18 days. The, you know, obviously, the issue is about, are we gonna be able to purchase them in time and whatnot? But I, I do think that this is an opportunity for Sacramento to be a leader in piloting how we can produce housing. That's gonna be not only just for the immediate, but provide long-term by looking at economy scale of, of doing this. Also, I do want to, I do support the, the variety of options that we have here, the, the, using the motel and hotel options for quick housing. And, but I do think we gotta take advantage of the land that we have with being able to secure good quality housing that has bathrooms and living room space at a very affordable price.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Acquisition of motels with kitchens and without kitchens. When we did the Capitol Park Hotel, it seemed like a great idea. And I know Christine says we could do these hotels, motels, with minimum improvements. And maybe that's what we thought. And maybe that's what we thought at the Capital Park Hotel. But then we got in there and we saw all types of problems. And it frankly became a black eye for the city. We had to go in and correct years and years and years of neglect because the public scrutiny was so intense on elevators not working, bedbugs, all manner of things. So I would be very leery about the properties that we would select if we were going to put people in the motels. And the notion of putting a kitchen in there, I just can't imagine the problems that are going to come from that with roaches and grease and all sorts of issues. If we put people in with kitchen, we're responsible for it. So I think the hotel motel acquisition could be a good thing. If we could manage it properly, make sure we selected a property that was actually in good shape and that we have real good onsite management, that we could provide food. Because what we've seen during the COVID crisis is that we can provide food to people. We can get meals out there and in an efficient way. So I think if we looked at motels and hotels in that context, it could be a good idea. The question comes, what do you do with people after they come out of the motel? Or do they stay in the motel forever? And should we be putting money into temporary fixes as opposed to putting money in a permanent fix, a permanent supportive housing? Those are my thoughts right now. I'm interested in hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
I had a couple of responses to this, Member Carr, just to clarify a few things.
Lisa, LaShelle?
Yes.
He called Councilman Warren. The mayor called Councilman Warren. Please honor and respect the mayor's request, please.
I changed my mind. I turned it over to Ms. Dozier for clarification.
Let me step back. I will humbly step back.
There we go. LaShelle?
I just wanted to clarify a few things. Councilmember Carr, when we were looking at the motels, and you see on the staff report, it says with kitchens and without, we were looking for motels that already had kitchens. So they would be like extended stay where there's a small kitchenette that is already built into the structure. We wouldn't actually be putting any kitchens into the hotels. And then in terms of long-term, we are looking at the motels as a long-term housing strategy. It would not be a temporary or short-term stay for the homeless individuals, but we would be looking to convert it over to permanently long-term housing. They would not have to leave.
Okay.
Okay. LaShelle?
Sharon?
Thank you, sir. You know, I am pleased to see the plan come forward. I think we've searched long and hard for alternatives for housing for our unhoused residents in Sacramento, knowing that there are going to be challenges and problems. But this gives us, I think, the opportunity to continue along that path and hopefully transition some of these people away from homelessness altogether through this program and others that come about into maybe the more stable apartments or homes or just a more stable form of life, which I think ultimately is what we want to help nurse or triage people back to a healthier existence. And so I want to thank SHRA, their staff. I want to thank all of my colleagues on the council for continually to make this a push. I want to thank the mayor for really doggedly going after money and trying to bring resources into Sacramento to help us. But knowing we don't have a perfect solution right now, but we have to take chances, you know, calculated risks. And I think, you know, at this point, this is a very good opportunity for us to see if we can make it work. And then to our city clerk, I just want to say that under, when I'm looking at my name on this screen, it says Councilmember District One. And I want to make sure, I just want to make sure you don't get Mayor Pro Tim mad at me, okay? So I am Council District Two. Thank you. Thank you for making the adjustment. I see it right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. LaShelle, thank you, you and Christine for your work on this. I was going through the report, and I just had a couple of questions. Overall, I think that the plan has a lot of merit. I noticed that, like Councilmember Harris said, Vice Mayor, the, some of the other more innovative options, like the one he mentioned, or pallet, aren't included here. And I think I understand some of your reasons for that, but I'd like you to state them. And then I do think Capital Park has worked very well overall. While it does have a congregate meal setting, I wonder if you've thought about, and this is to Councilmember Carr's earlier question, the risk of having people not have a kitchen. Would that lead them to microwaving and using hot plates in their rooms like we've seen at some other properties? And whether that that might present more risk? That's the second question. And the last question, the funding sources here, I think, have some merit to them. But I am worried about the overall cost here being somewhat outside of our ability. I would say, a little surprised to see you lay claim potentially to all 89.6 of our COVID relief funds, given that we have a wide range of things to do with those. But I admire your HUTBA in putting that in the report. Maybe a portion of those is likely, but not the whole 89.6, at least not from my standpoint. Christine, do you want to try to address a couple of those things?
Sure. Let me start with the first one. I just want to make sure the council knows we were not ruling out things like microphones, tiny homes, or modular. We discuss all of those, and we think they all have validity and would like to pursue all of those through time. We were just manufacturing homes is what we concentrated first off because we knew that we could probably acquire those within the next, you know, 30 to 60 days and have single-family lots that we might be able to use, as Councilwoman Harris said, immediately. So I don't want you to think we ruled out the others. We were just focusing for this report for VAC on manufactured homes. So I don't want to discourage those other ideas and continue looking to them. Number two, as far as the kitchens go, we imagine this over time being something like Boulevard Court, which of course is those old motel units in Stockton Boulevard, which have kitchens in them, where there's a little bit smaller sometimes in kitchenettes. But we would like to see over time it was rehabbed, the kitchens be remodeled and bathrooms. So it would be, you wouldn't just have a microwave. You would have a stove. We've done that in a couple of other developments too, especially in the county, and it's worked well. And I think the third one was the funding options. And I think we just threw that out there as an option, not the whole $89 million, but we have those plans recently come to the city, which might be available.
Okay, that's helpful. And the last thing I'd say, and it doesn't necessarily require a comment, but as we look at former motel properties, I do think we learned a lot from the acquisition of Capital Park and the conditions of some of the systems, the plumbing, the HVAC. And when we went in, I had raised some of those questions because of the age of the facility. And I think we learned to sort of kick the tires a little bit more thoroughly before we buy. But I know that we've learned that lesson, and hopefully for any property that would be acquired, we would plan for the deferred maintenance to be addressed as part of that budget number and work that into the acquisition price so we don't overpay. But other than that, I think this is a very robust strategy. I think it's another step in the right direction, and it pairs really well with our overall sheltering strategy that we've worked so hard on. So thank you for the hard work, and I'd encourage us to move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I have, who was next here? Councilmember Rashby.
Yeah, I guess I just have a procedural question, probably LaShelle for you. So, I mean, it seems to me that tonight you're just asking us to approve of the idea of moving forward with some of these things. Obviously, we can't do all of them, nor are we committing the funding tonight. Am I, so can you just walk me through that procedurally? I mean, I would assume the county's gonna, I mean, you mentioned the 89 million, which I agree with Councilmember Hanson, you know, obviously there are other things that will get pulled out of that. But I assume the county's going to put some of their funding towards this too, just as they have jointly worked with us on this piece so far to get people into the hotels. So can you just kind of tell me what that procedure would look like? Like what, when would this come back to the council to actually put funding in? Or, you know, some of the things my colleagues are suggesting are alternate strategies. So can you tie that up for me?
The purpose of this is to receive direction from the council in terms of next steps. And I think the mayor is probably going to speak to that. But we really wanted this to be a way for us to come up with some of the top things that we would consider. And then from there, for us to then move forward and have discussions with the county in a much more robust fashion so that we could really start to pool our resources. They are interested in rehousing the individuals who are coming out of Project Room Key. So we would be hoping to receive that direction so that we can then work collaboratively with the council, come up with some recommendations, but really more importantly, identify the funding sources. I mean, that is the key here. If we can identify the funding sources, then that will give us the opportunity to move forward with whatever the county.
Okay. That makes more sense to me. Okay, that sheds some light in the right direction. So my, just, I guess my input would be, and maybe you have a comment on it, LaShelle, I don't know, but how does this tie back to our five-point plan that the council approved moving forward, which includes like Grove, which is now up, and some of the other things that have been mentioned tonight? I mean, it seems to me that if we can continue forward with the five-point plan with the Scatterside models and the shelters and the, you know, purchasing of hotels in districts that that ties nicely back to this and creates those spaces. Am I missing something there?
No, you're right. It does complement the five-point plan. But this was really more immediate to try and address those individuals who will be coming out of those motels as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. So I see them as working in concert together, not one or the other. But it really is trying to pivot and immediately deal with those individuals who will need housing after they've been in those motels. We didn't want to have a situation where we would put them into the motels under Project Room Key, and then afterwards they have no place to go.
Right. Okay, makes sense. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Vice Mayor Harris, I'd like to weigh in a little bit, and then we'll go around a second time here. First of all, I just want to validate what LaShelle said a moment ago. The idea here is to have this discussion, gain some input here, and then continue our discussions with the county around, including how we use some portions of our respective stimulus dollars. But beyond that, how we together are going to rehouse as many people as possible. So this is just a launch and an opportunity to not wait until the end because what we don't want to do is have this discussion in July. Let's say Project Room Key ends, and then people ask, well, what did you do to think through how you were going to help people once the motel program ended? So this is a mini workshop, if you will. And the report itself, to me, is really good, and it is responsive to exactly what I asked for. But I want to speak, just step back for a minute and talk about what I think is our dilemma here as a city in thinking about this issue. You know, we now have a shelter strategy that is in the midst of being implemented in real time. And this is a permanent housing strategy. And of course, the goal is always permanent housing. But the flaw in some of the strategies, inherent in the strategies, are that we could never complete a motel acquisition, for example, in time to be able to transition any of these cohort of homeless people who are in these motels and will be entering in those motels into that permanent housing. Certainly, the flexible housing supports is a real-time opportunity. Manufactured housing is a real-time opportunity. What we're missing here, and it's sort of inherent in Councilmember Hanson's question and also what the Vice Mayor has talked about repeatedly, that's actually part of the national tension because decade and a half or two decades ago, permanent housing was less in vogue for this population, and transitional housing was the was the hot topic. Because the idea was it would be hard expense-wise, how long it takes to build a permanent housing, to move people from shelters or from the streets directly to permanent housing, and you needed some kind of transition housing. Well, that problem remains here today. And given the expense of what it would take to house even the 990, much less the people who won't be part of the Project Room Key endeavor, I want to ask that as we come back and as we go to the county, that we also raise this issue of transitional housing. And this is where the tiny home strategy, the pallet, the cabin communities, the, what did you call them, Vice Mayor Harris? The mobile pads?
Micropads.
The micropads, the stacked units, become relevant. Because to go back to an old number that I used a couple of years ago, if we were to purchase, let's just say we were to purchase 1,000 varieties of these efficiency homes at $15,000 apiece, that would be $15 million. Now, that would be less expensive than the overall cost here, certainly, understanding that it wouldn't necessarily come with service. It wouldn't come with services unless we added the services. But would we be better off if we had a parallel strategy that said we are going to buy hundreds of these products, and we were going to find a place to put them with pastors and with community-based organizations and with service providers? And let the purchase of these then actually lead us to where to place them as opposed to identifying a specific or discrete project first, having to go through all that and then ordering them? What if we had 1,000 Grove homes that we were then committed to placing around the community? We could then get 2,000 or 3,000 people off the street if it were two to a unit. Now, I understand the downside of this. This is not permanent housing that can be financed in sort of the traditional ways that permanent housing is financed, 30-year guarantees of affordability or 55-year guarantees of affordability. I understand that. But what if these homes lasted five to 10 years? And we were able to get a couple thousand people off the streets? In other words, if we want to kind of break the mold here a little bit and actually see some relief on our streets, then maybe we ought to not replace what's in front of us with what I'm suggesting, but actually be equally as urgent about this kind of transitional housing and try to line up the supports in the best way that we can. But at least get a couple of thousand people indoors, in addition, from the shelters, into something that could last three to five to 10 years. We just have run round and round about this efficiency housing issue. And we never make a decision because we're always looking for the project to lead to the housing type. Maybe we ought to invest in the housing type and then go find the project. But I want to stir it up a little bit in that way, not to replace this because this is solid, and permanent housing is the ultimate goal. But I want to, I want to put that out there for discussion, please. Vice Mayor?
There we go. Mayor, thank you very much for raising really salient points. The fact of the matter is, we have to match the product to the demographic. And the fact of the matter is, a very And the fact of the matter is, a very small percentage of our homeless population would currently be successful in permanent housing. So manufactured housing is a great solution. In fact, all of these that LaShaw has brought forth are great solutions. But you have to look at the population you're serving. What we know in Sacramento is the preponderance of our homeless population are men, older men with a lot of physical disabilities. We have families, of course, in transition age youth. But drug addiction is rampant throughout the population, and we haven't settled on a number. But we know that a high percentage of our homeless population are candidates for permanent supportive housing, which is very costly. So there's a reason that I like stackable modulars. First, um, we know that a kind of dense, uh, situation like that has been proven at Seventh and H. Seventh and H is, is a very instructive project for us to look at in terms of how we house the homeless, either transitional or long-term, because it does both. So the, the thing I like about micro pads or any kind of wooden stackable modular or whatever is that it's not land-intensive. And if we can get a developer to put them up, the more, the merrier. We, we, we really do have an issue with numbers. We have an awful lot of people with very deep problems to get into some form of housing. So given what you said, Mayor, I think that we need to put a finer point on the discussion of matching the product to the population, and then think in terms of how can we get various populations into a successful situation where they can be productive near and long-term? And the last thing I wanna leave you with, and thank you for letting me start round two, I appreciate it. As you know, and I'm kind of a, you know, I, I go on and on about this, but the fact of the matter is, we proved it at Railroad. Two-thirds of our population are drug addicted. And unless we have a very robust drug detox program, these folks are not, they're not only not gonna be successful in housing, they're not gonna be successful in triage shelters. So we kind of have to start as step one. But I appreciate very much your bringing up the idea of, you know, the numbers. How many people can we get indoors and take pressure off of our streets? There are perhaps thirty, maybe thirty-six percent of the people outdoors who could be successful in permanent housing in a relatively short period of time. And, you know, a prefab housing, one-off houses would, would be great. And of course, we have families on the street. We need to deal with that. I just wanted to leave you with the point that we really have to match the population to the product and look at their real issues. Because unless we deal with the underlying issue of, of drug addiction and mental health, nobody's gonna be successful in any product we give them.
Okay. Anybody else wanna?
I have Councilmember Jennings and then Councilmember Guerra signed up to speak.
Please, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my, my colleagues have brought up some incredible points. So LaShaw and Christine, um, I just wanna kind of know, um, the number that we're using, no matter what the product is, um, and is that number included in the numbers that we've been looking at? Or the supportive services and the case management services that are gonna be needed, uh, no matter what, what product it is that we're looking at for housing? Um, is that number in the numbers that we're looking at?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And, and based on the fact that everybody needs something different, h- how do you, what's the formula that you use on a per-person basis?
Uh, well, the example, um, we have in the, um, staff report, actual, um, real-life examples. For example, we think for, um, the motels, we use the, um, operating, um, budget for, for property management and services based on Boulevard Court, the project I mentioned earlier on Stockton Boulevard. Uh, for the flexible housing program, those are actual dollars, um, that the county is actually using um, to operate the program now. And again, that includes a lot, these rents and includes services and everything. And then manufactured homes is a combination of the two. Um, so it's a sort of scattered sites, so a little more staff is needed to operate in a scattered site. But still, very supportive services, uh, property management companies that are very familiar with this homeless population. Know how to work with them. I think all those things are very important in any of these models.
So if we took the, the goal of getting nine-hundred-and-ninety, um, residents off the street, we would have the supportive services and case management ability to take care of all those folks?
All the numbers you see here in the, the budgets would include very supportive services, health, um, behavioral health, those kind of things. I will say, I don't think that any one model is probably gonna house nine-hundred-and-ninety, um, folks, but you might have to mix and match models to get to that number. For example, just right now, they can take two-hundred additional folks. But to get to nine-ninety, we might have to do a combination.
Okay.
What to add is, uh, we felt very strongly that any model that we proposed, uh, for the rehousing actually did come with services. Um, it may vary in terms of what the type of services are needed, but all of the recommendations here include services and support. Because that's critical to keep people healthy.
Yeah, and I do, and, and I think it's more critical than even the housing model that we're talking about. Um, when we're talking about the mental issues, the health issues, the substance abuse, um, all the different things that they're going through from being on the street, the drug addiction, all that stuff. Um, so that's why I'm kind of trying to look to see how, how, to me, that's more of an investment than even the housing that we're talking about. So there's no question in that. It's just me trying to process in my own mind the cost that it's gonna take for supportive services and, and case management for the people that we're talking about. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Geta?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, this item here is asking us for, uh, uh, direction to staff on how to move forward. And so, one, I, I, I believe that what the staff has recommended is, is, um, is good. I support it. Uh, one, the, the, the Boulevard Court concept is not that far from my house in District Six. Uh, in fact, uh, I remember the, the community engagement process when that was going through with Mercy Housing, and it's been a success. Uh, I recall the, how the, how it, how it used to be, how that old motel used to be. And now it's provided permanent supportive housing, uh, on Stockton Boulevard and been an amenity to improve the Boulevard. Um, and so that's the great part about the, the, that part of it. Uh, on the manufactured housing piece, um, because it's a single home, and they can be built in any kind of way or design. We could build them in a, almost a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, um, uh, si- si- situation where an organization like Sacramento Self-Help Housing or Mutual Housing can manage those programs. And they already have experience managing those programs. I think, uh, how, uh, Christine mentioned, um, that, uh, the county has a contract for, on the scattered site. I know in District Six, we have a couple scattered sites that we are using those. So the manufactured housing piece, I think, can produce quick, immediate, and permanent housing, um, for, uh, uh, in this situation. So we, we're, we're hitting a lot of points there. Low cost, and it's also economy of scale. So if we start to go with a higher number of purchases, it's just the, the sheer nature of the, of the, of the manufacturing process that the cost goes down. So, uh, if the city of Sacramento went into manufactured housing and other cities came in, now we can develop a, a larger economy scale to bring the cost down for whatever project we're looking at here. Uh, but I do wanna, as far as direction to this, I do wanna support the mayor's recommendation here in looking, a- and Councilmember Vice Mayor Harris's recommendation here about, um, uh, micro pads. Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Hanson called them also, uh, pallet housing as a combination of it. I think it's important to have it, uh, to remember that it, that we have to have a good balance here because the longevity and life of these products are different. Um, the manufactured housing is built to Title twenty-four, so it has like your house or my house, uh, fifty-plus year lifespan. And, uh, and, and it is mobile, and it can be moved and then we're set on a, on a, uh, foundation. Um, the micro pads, though, they only have about a ten-year, five-year, maybe fifteen-year, depending on the product, lifespan. So we wouldn't want the lifespan of all of these products that we purchased to all of a sudden end at one time, and then we fall ourselves in that situation. So I think having a balance of products that have different longevities, because we want immediateness now with also permanent solutions, but no, understanding that we also have a, a capacity problem. So I think it's if we had a good balance of, of, of the efficiency micro pa- uh, micro pad housing, uh, a significant number of manufactured housing, and then looking at retrofitting motels as we move to what is permanent supportive housing. We can't forget that that's an, an option that does take longer, but I think it's that balance approach. So that would be my direction, is to add the mayor's component, but make sure that we have a good balance of, uh, when it comes to the longevity of the type of housing. And we have, um, services that, that can meet each one of those scenarios.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jeff reminded me of something that we used to talk about all the time in this regard. And Jeff, I know you've been working this problem for a long time, and you have a good understanding of it. And you, uh, above all of us, have felt the breadth of this issue. But I think you're on, to my way of thinking, way, or I'm on to your way of thinking, that you have to provide the solution to fit the problem. And, uh, not everyone can go into permanent supportive housing or, or independent living for that matter. And if we can get thirty to forty percent of the, they can be successful, living independently with a little bit of help. I- it's beyond me why we don't do that. We can get fifteen hundred people off the street, and they will be successful. Let's go after them. Those people who need minimum health, those people who are not addicted, the individuals who don't have severe mental issues. Let's get them off the street now. And that would drastically reduce the, uh, the negative things that we see on our streets. And then with the money left, we can start segmenting the rest of the population. Uh, who's left after we get the people we can get off right now? Who's left? Well, people who have addiction, we can put, handle them another way. People who have, uh, mental issues, handle them another way. People who have whatever their issue is, uh, handle them in accordance with what they need in order to improve their lives. But first of all, let's get, help the people who want help. Help the people who want to get off the street right now and develop solutions for them. And if that's the micro pads or the hotels, that's fine. But let's, let's segment the population, stop treating them all as one group. Identify the segments that we can help in, what's the best solution for them? So if we told LaShaw to do that, we say, LaShaw, thirty to forty percent of the people who are homeless can operate independently with minimal assistance. What program would you come up with to get fifteen hundred people off the street right now? And that's the one we should go with. And how do you answer that, LaShaw?
I think the critical thing is determining if statistically thirty to forty percent can be helped with minimal assistance. And I would say, based on the statistics that we have seen, that that is probably a pretty high number, uh, and that you really aren't gonna find thirty to forty percent who can, uh, have minimal assistance, uh, and be fine.
What's the, what's the right, what's the right number?
That would be a relative number, but it definitely is not in that category.
Okay?
Well, we have navigators out. I think they could help us determine who those people are, who can, um, just need a room, just needed an address, just need to be able to take a shower, just need to have the number to set up, just need to have somewhere for their kids to be babysit. Let's get them off the street. We can do that very easily right now without these expensive programs. If we get half the people off the street, or twenty percent, LaShaw fifteen percent, I would take fifteen percent. Ten percent, whatever it is, let's get them off the street while we can.
You'll see that families usually are the ones that if you can capture, uh, a family, especially with kids, and give them the right resources that they can, um, actually resolve and be okay.
Councilman Hanson?
Uh, thanks. I, I just wanted to circle back. Um, one of the things that's been a, a large impact of late, and I hope that we're finding ways to address it, but is, has been the large number of releases from, um, state correctional institutions, uh, Rio Casumus, uh, Correctional Facility and the main jail. Uh, most of the people, certainly from the county jail system, um, the vast majority of them, I think ninety percent plus, are being released out of the main jail. And, um, they're not at this point, from what I understand, being provided any services as they're released. Um, to Councilmember Carr's point, uh, many of them have no address. They have no way to get ahold of people. Um, they, they're just kind of released out the front door. I, I know that it's, it's a very significant burden right now, um, on a lot of the adjacent neighborhoods and the businesses. But I do think that we, a- as we work through this, we'll have to partner with the county to figure out what their plan is for all of those releases, um, that are, uh, essentially right into the downtown core, that go to the River District, that filter up into the American River Parkway, and then down into other parts of the city. Um, because, uh, I, I think many of those people, uh, are in need of those services. And to a certain extent, the data is very clear that they can be helped, um, potentially with continuity of the services they were getting inside, if they had those. And so I think that's one of the missing pieces of the puzzle, and I just wanted to throw that into the mixer so that we don't lose sight of those folks.
So let me see if I might sum this up a little bit, if, uh, there's another comments. You know, it might seem kind of strange to you, but I kind of agree with much of what Councilmember Carr had to say on the subject. Um, i- in that I, I have always said, while every individual matters, this is a volume issue. And it, it is primarily about the people who suffer the condition of homelessness, but it's also about our communities and its impact on them. And you, the members especially live this, especially certain members, live this every single day. And so I think the direction here is to, one, work in absolute partnership with the county. Number two, um, while the motel acquisition strategy, I think, is important in the long term, and we shouldn't forget it, anything and everything we can do through manufactured housing, through flexible housing supports, and through, I'm gonna add this again, more transitional housing in the form of, uh, what is less expensive, easier to construct, and easier to place, um, that we ought to do so that we can add up our overall strategy in the high hundreds or, or thousands, because that's the magnitude of the problem. To use Project Room Key as, a- as, uh, one potential to bridge it here. Um, a- and so I think the report is a great foundation to do all of that. But I would like to please add, um, when we do come back for action, a specific recommendation on the efficiency home purchase of some kind. Because again, um, as Jeff said, the prod- the, the project needs to meet the condition. But I wanna reiterate what, what I said earlier, which is that sometimes we wait for a long time to try to define the project. If we have the inventory, just as the COVID crisis created an imperative for us to actually move people indoors, if we actually have the inventory, it's gonna then lead us to find the right place to put the inventory and be able to help, you're right, Councilman Carr, uh, people who may just need a roof over their head for a year, two years, three years, as they transition into, into more permanent housing. We must focus on the volume in providing as much relief as we can on, on and from our streets and help as many individuals as we can. So thank you for a great discussion, everybody. And, um, I'm sure that- And I'm sure that after further conversations with the county, we will be back at this again, actually, maybe in conjunction with our federal stimulus dollars, to actually begin approving specific funded strategies. So more to come. All right, that ends that item. That is our agenda for the evening. Are there council ideas or questions? Okay. Is there public testimony on items?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I had my hand up. I just wanted to get to see if we had an update on the appointments to the Ethics Commission. And I know the Ethics Commission is going to be looking at appointments for the redistricting commission, and so I want to make sure that if we need to do, take care of those issues and have a full Ethics Commission appointed, that we take care of that so that we're ready to go when we're moving on the redistricting commission process. So if staff could get back to me, I'd greatly appreciate that and get an update.
Councilmember Guerra, this is the City Clerk Committee copy, and we are monitoring that very closely and are on target.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement.
Yeah?
So, you know, because of COVID-19, we had to let go of our Pops in the Park program for this year, which is a sore loss for thousands of people who really enjoy it and have for 28 years. But I have a surprise announcement. We are going to do a virtual Pops. It's going to be one event, it will be on June 6th, and I'm not going to tell you who we got, but we got somebody pretty cool who you all will know about.
Lady Gaga?
Yeah, it was Gaga. How'd you know, man?
How'd you know?
Sorry, I ruined the surprise. She called me last night.
Gave you a foot massage. Hey. But, so this is a little bit of a teaser, because we have some fine tuning to do, but I'm very excited about it. It will also be a fundraiser for Women's Empowerment in my district, which is a really fine organization that helps get women and women with children off the streets and into a productive lifestyle. I'm very excited about it, you know, it gives us something to do, for one thing, but I think it will be a really enjoyable evening. So more to come, and I expect that you all enjoy it a lot.
Thank you, look forward to that, Vice Mayor. Councilman Carr?
Yes, Mayor. Looking at the basing that Dr. Fauci has put out, even in Phase Three, certain individuals are going to still be asked to stay at home and isolate. Have we given any thought as to when we will return to normal order for council meetings?
Thank you, Councilman Carr. That's a great question. And yes, we have been thinking about it, and also thinking about when we might return slowly to City Hall itself. I don't think we're ready yet to do that. The county has not modified its orders yet significantly. And I know it will be my recommendation that as we do transition back, that we do so slowly and carefully, and that we modify for a longer term how we are present when we are together. So we're thinking a lot about it, recognizing that the governor made his major announcement earlier in the week, and that the county, I believe, is prepared to begin taking some action. But it's too soon. And on that note, if I may, I don't want to be the downer here, but I'm sure you get these things a lot, but I just got a picture of one of our fine midtown restaurants here, where for whatever reason, it looks like there are dozens of people gathered outside, mingling together without masks on. And I'm telling you that our need to return back to work, our need to open up businesses, our need to open up our community in smart ways, will be hindered if people do not respect, in the letter and the spirit, the physical distancing requirements that are still in effect. Same thing I said and I was mad about with the protest at the Capitol. It's just plain irresponsible. And if you want this to go on for a lot longer, and, you know, then you might engage in that kind of behavior. But if you want to end this sooner and begin transitioning us back in a safe way, it's discouraging to me to see that kind of, to get that kind of picture. And on behalf of the community, I just want to continue to urge people to please stay with this. The orders are changing, they're going to change within the next couple of days, and so we're going to begin to get the return, but we will be sent way, way